The regular meeting of the Busires City Council for July the 2nd, 2019 is called to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
McKeever here.
Myers here. Wireball here.
Truca here.
Sack here.
Here.
Shaw here.
Before you, you have the minutes for the June 18th, 2019 regular meeting. I need a motion to accept these minutes.
Some move, second.
Motion by Mr. Foote, second by Mr. Truca to accept the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing say no. Motion passed, thank you. This is where we bring up permission for visitors to speak. Is there anyone that wants to talk to council this evening? No one?
The chair.
Okay. Moving on to communications and petitions. We have one letter received.
Address to City Council dated June 24th from the City Traffic Commission. Address to Council President Sislove. Dear Madam President, the City Busires Traffic Commission would like to refer several items to council. To health and safety, the Traffic Commission would like to recommend amendments to the traffic control map. Number one, repeal number ordinance 6267 dated December 20, 1967. No parking of a motor vehicle shall henceforth be permitted on the south side of East Southern Avenue from Marion Road east to Whitestone Street in the city of Busires, Ohio. And replaced with no parking of a motor vehicle shall henceforth be permitted on the south side of East Southern Avenue from Marion Road east to the city limits and no parking on the north side of East Southern Avenue from Whitestone Street west to 40 feet. Please note that the drop off signs on the north side of East Southern Avenue will be removed and the striking will be redone. Number two, amend ordinance 6377 dated December 8, 1977 to provide for the full-time operation of an electric traffic control device at the intersection of Marion Road Beal Avenue and Fairview Avenue. Add no turn on red on Beal Avenue and Marion Road and Fairview Avenue, on Fairview Avenue and Marion Road Beal Avenue, and on Marion Road and Beal Avenue and Fairview Avenue. Repeal ordinance 2778 dated June 1, June 17, 1964. Two stop signs on West Beal Avenue and Marion Road, one stop sign on Fairview Avenue and Marion Road, one stop sign on Marion Road at Fairview, and two stop signs on Marion Road and Beal Avenue. Number three, add to the traffic control map for signage at the Whitestone Reserve. One yield sign on Crystal Crescent at Waterford Drive and one yield sign at Dunwoy Court at Waterford Drive. The next two referrals are to the Plating Committee. The Traffic Commission would like to counsel to decide if the lot between Ladies and Wendy's should be sold or changed into a thoroughfare. The Traffic Commission would like to recommend the acceptance of the public thoroughfares at the Whitestone Reserve, Crystal Crescent, Dunwoy Court, and Waterford Drive. Sincerely, Jeffries, your mayor, and attached to this, you'll see the, uh, 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 the traffic control map. Those here referred to health and safety and replied.
Okay, the first, uh, three items need to be, to be referred to the Health and Safety Committee. Do I have a motion, please?
Some move, second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing say no. Motion passed. And then, uh, the last, uh, item, two items. Uh, the lot between Ladies and Wendy's and, uh, public thoroughfares out of Whitestone Reserve. Those need to go to plating. Do I have a motion, please?
Some move, second.
Motion by Mr. Keever, second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And voters say no. Motion passed, thank you. Moving on to standing committee reports. Sack, would you like to get started with that, please?
Busires City Council Joint Regular Committee Meeting was Thursday, June 20th, 6:00 PM to 7:43 PM. Members present were Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Bruce Truca, Monica Sack, Doug Foote, and Andrew Shaw. Number one, Busires City Joint Regular Committee Meeting was called to order by Sack at 6:00 PM. Number two, public participation, there was none. Number three, order of committee business. A finance committee met from 6:00 PM to 6:02 PM. Members present were Dan Wireball, Kevin Myers, Andrew Shaw, and myself. Number one, various appropriations. Otter Joyce Schiffer explained that the following appropriations need be made. A, from unappropriated general funds, $1,297.25 to security of persons and property in police departments, materials and supplies, which includes $297.25 in donations for safety funds and a $1,000 grant for police explorers. B, from unappropriated general funds, $500 to police department capital outlay for a donation to the police K-9 unit. C, from unappropriated derelict building funds, $30,000, $30,520 to fire department other uses for an insurance deposit received for 302 to 304 Wesley and Silk Street. Shaw made a motion to request legislation making the various appropriations, but the second by Myers. Motion passed by both votes. Number two, Sack resets the finance committee at 6:02 PM.
Questions or comments regarding about the finance minutes? Okay, moving on, Service Committee, Mr. Truca?
Service Committee met June 20th, 6:03 PM. Members present were Dan Wireball, Doug Foote, Andrew Shaw, and myself. Raw water line, the redundant line is in good shape at most of its 10,000 feet, run through mature woods along the Sandusky River, raising questions about access. As an alternative, a new 16-inch line could be extended from the new water plant south along Quinney Street. Although cost comparisons are just rough estimates, converting the old raw water line would cost about $180,000 without taking into account clearing of the trees. Building a new line down Quinney Street to the railroad tracks and from there branching off north to the Crossroads Industrial Park and south into the city could cost $750,000 to $1,000,000. Water distribution team leader John Ernstberger showed a video of the inside of the raw water line, which was installed in 1972. He said the joints looked good. The video showed several zebra mussels in the line, which is not currently in use. Several large rocks had also gotten into the line. Lynn McKeever of McKeever and Associates said his firm conducted simulations of water availability at peak use with a structure fire underway and concluded that the city would not run out of water in that event. He said his greater concern is maintenance of the line given its location, although its condition suggested could be usable for at least another 50 years. A redundant water line is required by the state. The matter was continued until McKeever and Associates and the administration come up with detailed cost comparisons of maintaining the existing raw water line or building a new backup line along Quinney Street. Number two, easement for 1426 Hopley Avenue. Law director Rob Ratliff explained that he needs a resolution granting a temporary easement at 1426 Hopley Avenue pending court approval to allow water line work there to proceed. The owner of the property has been incapacitated and the city has been unable to make contact. Wireball made a motion to request such legislation, but the second by both, motion passed by both votes. Truca recessed the Service Committee at 6:54 PM.
Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding the Service Committee minutes?
Yeah, I just have more.
Yes, certainly.
Uh, what we keep saying is, and we said this last time we talked about this, $180,000 to clean this line, and that's already been did and the contractor hasn't. So I don't see where, uh, the clearing of the trees would have to be an additional cost to the city. But we keep saying that, like, oh, it's going to cost us money to remove these trees. But this has been did, so I, I don't understand why we keep saying that.
Mr. Mayor, the contract...
The contract is for just cleaning the water, raw water line, not for allowing us full access to it.
It's like about cleaning the inside of it.
Inside of, yeah.
That's all the contract is for.
If we're going to clean that, you know, and we have a break, it would be in our best interest to, uh, you know, clean the foliage on top of the raw water line. We should have been maintained, you know, 40, 50 years ago, but it never has been done, so... And if we have a break, you know, down the road, there's a, you know, 50-year-old maple tree on top of it, you know, uh, it might be very difficult to fix unless we remove that maple tree first. So that what the additional cost is going to be, excuse me, is to have a path over top of the raw water line of a width to be determined, um, so we can get in there and actually service the raw water line if we need to. And probably two or three times a year, two of them will, you know, clear, correct that, and then trees and...
So I believe there's more information. This will be back in...
It'll all be back in there, yeah.
It's going to be back in committee for, for more discussion. I think since this meeting here, they've come up with more information than they would have been in the committee. Okay? Anything else? Moving on, plating, Mr. McKeever?
The Plating Committee met Thursday, June 20th, 2019, 6:55 to 7:01 PM. Members present were Sack, Bruce Truca, Kevin Myers, and myself, Chair. Number one, codified ordinance 1131.12, fire protection. The ordinance currently requires that a, that the minimum size of any water line servicing a fire hydrant in the city shall not be less than eight inches in diameter. Water distribution team leader John Ernstberger explained that the Ohio EPA allows such water lines to be as small as six inches. Service safety director Jeff Wagner suggested the ordinance be changed to allow six-inch lines when it's considered appropriate. Lynn McKeever of McKeever and Associates observed the fire departments, uh, observed the fire departments prefer larger water lines while smaller lines are more beneficial for water quality. Truca made a motion to request legislation amending codified ordinance 1131.12 to state that the minimum size of any water line servicing a fire hydrant in the city shall not be less than six inches in diameter. Sack seconded the motion and Myers voted no pending further research. Motion passed by both votes. McKeever resets the Plating Committee at 7:01 PM.
Okay, just an FYI for everyone, this piece of legislation has been pulled for tonight. Uh, we're going to do some further consideration and have some, uh, further information brought back to the Plating Committee before we'll be presented. Okay? Any other questions or comments? Moving on, health and safety, Mr. Myers?
Health and safety met at 7:01 PM. Members present were Mark McKeever, Bruce Truca, Andrew Shaw, and Kevin Myers, Chair. Item one, traffic map changes. The committee received a letter from the City Traffic Commission recommending the traffic control map be amended to establish no parking on Sandusky Avenue from Charles Perry Streets from 5:30 to 7:00 AM on Fridays instead of 3:00 to AM to 5:00 AM. Mayor Jeffrieser noted that businesses along Sandusky Avenue would be notified to change and that Carter Park on the street at that time would not be towed. Truca made a motion to request legislation so amending the traffic control map, but the second by Shaw, motion passed by both votes. Item two, codified ordinance 511.01, noise control general prohibitions. Law director Rob Ratliff explained that the city recently lost a court case concerning a noise complaint in the downtown business district because the judge considered the city's noise ordinance failed. He provided councilpersons with several noise ordinances from other municipalities that are more detailed and specific. It was noted that police officers would likely need despondators to enforce a new ordinance. Ratliff cautioned that the city has a number of noise generating businesses that have been grandfathered into mixed-use zone districts. The matter was continued. Myers recessed the Health and Safety Committee at 7:21 PM.
Questions or comments about the Health and Safety Committee minutes? None? Moving on, public plans and buildings, Mr. Wireball?
Public plans and buildings committee held their meeting, uh, Thursday, June 20th, 2019, began at 7:21 PM. Members present, Doug Foote, Mark McKeever, Bruce Truca, and myself, Chair. First up was City Hall lobby news. Mayor Jeffrieser reported that the administration has been approached by the Busires Tourism and Visitors Bureau about setting up a small room in the City Hall lobby. After questions were asked about precisely where the room would be, what it would look like, and who would pay for its installation, the mayor responded that he would gather that information. The matter was continued. Utility billing kiosk. The possibility of having a kiosk in the City Hall lobby for automated payment of utility bills was last discussed by council in 2015. Council President Sislove observed that additional security is needed for employees in the utility department. Rieser noted that the administration can contact other municipalities about how they handle their payments. After discussion about how long it takes various banks to process utility payments, the matter was continued. Wireball recessed the Public Plans and Buildings Committee at 7:38 PM.
Questions or comments regarding the Public Plans and Buildings minutes? None? Okay, thank you. Moving on, economic development, Mr. Foote?
Economic Development Committee met Thursday, June 20th, 2019, at 7:38 PM. Members in attendance were Monica Sack, Dan Wireball, Mark McKeever, and myself, Chair. Up first, citywide community reinvestment area. Pogomire Design Group has submitted its draft plan for a citywide community reinvestment area, CRA. Law director Rob Ratliff observed that the new CRA, which will be administered by Pogomire, will include residential and retail properties in the city for the first time. No concerns about the draft plan were voiced. The plan will now be submitted to the school districts in the city for their comments, followed by state approval, then final legislative approval by council. Number two, Foote recessed the Economic Development Committee at 7:42 PM.
Any questions or comments regarding the Economic Development Committee meeting? None? Would you like to finish the source, please?
Uh, Finance Committee did not meet because raw water line was continued in service. Number four, public participation, there was none. Number five, I ask for motion to adjourn the Joint Regular Committees. Motion by Wireball and second by Shaw to adjourn at 7:42 PM. Motion passed.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Traffic Commission, Mayor Rieser, you have the March 26th minutes?
All right. Uh, yes, March 26th, Tuesday, uh, 2019, at 11:00 AM, myself, Mr. Wagner, Chief Keller, and Police Captain Stevens are present. Keller made a motion, seconded by Wagner, approved amendment January 18th, 2018. Traffic Commission meeting, and that passed. Our old business at East Southern Avenue Parking, uh, the trial will end on April 14th, 2019. It was clarified that once the 90-day trial is completed, that the Traffic Commission will revisit the idea of no parking on the north side of East Southern from Whitestone to Highland with the 15-minute drop-off. If there are no complaints, then a letter could be sent to the Health and Safety with the recommendation. However, parking will be allowed during stormwater slash sewer separation projects in the area. Finally, once the projects are complete, the Traffic Commission would then revisit if parking should be on East Southern Avenue or not. Crosswalk signage, uh, top priority crosswalks are on Wallon Street and the Courthouse, Lane Street at Harmon Park, and West Mansfield Street and Nevada Road. Jeff Dunn and SSD Wagner will discuss the cost of different types of signs, which that was tabled. Speed zones, Mark Baker is working on speed zones at Southern Avenue and West Mansfield Street. That needs a little bit more time, that was tabled also. Speed signs, Jeff Dunn reported the signs been posted with various speed zones changed by ODOT, and they sent the filings paperwork about the changes. Our new business is along West Warren Street. Lieutenant Word said alert to Traffic Commission to eliminate parking, to review eliminating parking on the north side of West Warren Street, west of South Poplar through 221. There are issues with accessibility to the post office when, uh, docks and contractors are making deliveries. The trucks do not have enough room to pull west on West Warren and back onto the dock at the post office. This causes them to drive over the curb and damage a tree on an ACS title. Stevens made a motion, seconded by Wagner, under 90-day trial, no parking on the north side, West Warren, South Poplar, to the alley, Will Paul. Everyone voted yes except for Chief Keller, but no. Motion passed. Light traffic on Marion slash Beal and Marion slash Fairview, and no turn on red at this intersection. Wagner made a motion, seconded by Stevens, to solve the, uh, no turn on red signs and all stop bars at the intersection of Marion Avenue, Beal Avenue, and Fairview Avenue for 90-day trial. All were in fair with Keller abstaining and voting motion passed. Once the letter is written to the Health and Safety Committee for the amendment to the traffic control map, it will be asked to correct ordinance 2778 dated June 17th, 18, excuse me, 1964, that removes the stop signs and adds the traffic light. Snow street audits, Jeff Dunn suggested that the police department administration audit the snow streets throughout town. If it is found the signs are necessary, Jeff Dunn will order a replacement sign and table that. Turn lights on Stetson Road, he was asked at the intersection of East Mansfield and Stetson Road to add turn lights. Dunn explained that the original lights were not allowed on turn lights because East Mansfield is US 30. Dunn will research if the intersection requirements have been changed and will do audits to see if the turn lights wouldn't be necessary. He also suggested changing the current lights, that a turn light would be costly and unnecessary, and that the necessity and cost would need to be weighed by the, by the table. Street sweeping for downtown, um, needs to have no parking along Sandusky on Friday morning from 5:30 to 7:00 for street sweeping. Ordinance 2588 dated November 15th, 1960, and ordinance 2778 dated June 17th, 64, set no parking from Charles to Perry from 3:00 AM to 5:00 AM. The signs were never put back up after the downtown streets were done. Keller made a motion, seconded by Wagner, to send a letter to Health and Safety to amend the ordinance and put the signs up. Motion passed. Made a resur, would like letters sent to the businesses and presidents of downtown to notify of this ordinance amendment if Health and Safety approves or change. Resident Paul Mojer asked if more stop signs could be removed within the city. Mojer would like to see Lucas and Walnut, Whitestone and Woodland, and Bland and Willard to have the stop signs removed to make two-way stops at those intersections. He was advised, Chief Keppi is working on travel, trying to study throughout the city, and that no other complaints have been received for this. Keller made a motion, seconded by Stevens, to adjourn at 11:37 AM, and that passed. That's it.
Okay, does anyone have any, uh, questions about traffic?
Just a quick comment.
Yes.
I just think it's worth commending Lieutenant Word on his observation there on West Warren Street because that is, that has really been torn up and been a juggernaut over there for those semis to try and pull in and back the post office and, you know, we need to get our mail and, so, good call.
Anyone else? I guess I have a comment. Uh, on State Route 19 and 100 going over to Galleon. Uh, the 45 mile and, and all, actually this is outside of our city limits, but, um, it's like all the way out to Henderson Trucking. It's 45 miles an hour going out and coming in. Why did the state do that?
Ask hot.
Hot, mad gentleman there, didn't you, the other day?
I come in to work that way, and I was coming in one morning, uh, east westbound into the city, weighed 55, I got pulled over quicker, weighed 55 and 45. I thought it was 55 because the way it was found, it was 55. So, in other words, it was 55 west and it was 45 east. I mentioned that to the police chief, Keppi, uh, we got the, had a call on the phone, we did a conference call, um, they got in touch with ODOT and they changed it. It was now 45 both ways until we go, we're easily just past JNF Junction.
Yeah.
The fifth calling thing is when you come up 100 and turn left, there's usually a sign that says 45 up ahead. Well, when you turn left, you don't see that sign, because it's on the other side of 100. So you're just all of a sudden, it's people. And, uh, it was changed about three weeks ago, but the way it was westbound now it's been changed both ways and not changed at Bland and Fox Street, and so now it's 45 both ways until almost, uh, the break with the...
More important, did they, did they forget your ticket?
They're just going to walk there.
Oh, okay.
Well, since you brought that up, you notice that same route there, uh, there's a sign there, also from the church just past Beal coming into town that says 45 miles an hour. And then there's a sign that says 35 miles per this curb, and then there's another sign that says 45 miles an hour. So I'm not sure within like 1,000 feet, you know, and...
I'm sure it's one of those things where they, you know, they slow you down for a curb. I mean, that's a decent curb out there.
Yeah, but I mean, you can see both signs at the same time.
Those are old, that's, and Morris Sanduski, um, pulled out towards Pickwood Place, Marion Road by Shaw and sending them down. Uh, we had injections on all of those.
My first signs.
Yeah.
The state said this is the way it would be. Anything else? Okay, the other one we're going to be talking about later, okay. I need a, pardon?
Do you have another traffic?
Yes, Wednesday, 2:30.
Wednesday, 2:30?
Okay, Wednesday, 2:30 PM. That's a new business, okay.
Sorry.
Um, I need a motion to accept committee minutes and related committee reports collectively.
Some move, second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Shaw. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing say no. Motion passed, thank you. Reported city officers, Mayor Rieser?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I've got a very short report. Congratulations to, uh, Paul Nickle and, uh, his ambassadors back in Blountry. I think that is for Busires to have that building over there. A hot bit of activity. Um, in Gordmans, we had a lot of fun, uh, the ribbon cutting in Gordmans. And, uh, you know, nice store, nice store, nice staff, everything with them, and, um, you know, very impressive. They're opening a lot of stores. We think it's very important to maintain that department store tradition. Uh, Jim Shaw was in town, I don't know if anybody got to meet with him. He attended Rotary with me on Tuesday. He works for Attorney General Davios. Uh, he's been a couple of times. And I also had another visitor, who we are going to say goodbye to, a very sweet young lady by name of Leah Jones. She worked for Sandra Brown. And, uh, she let us know that she was heading back to grad school. And, uh, and, uh, she said attend, attend that. So, make big time to school. So we wished her best of luck, and I know they'll be taking interviews with her replacement there if she manages it. Uh, Gary Frankhouse and, uh, and, uh, the people that are on the Bon Trois group regarding the opportunity. Yeah, so much going on, and we talked about the CRA, but also the opportunity, something going on. I'm working with, uh, and, uh, I went with them last week. Vincent Miller, I don't know, hopefully some of you got down to Art Park last Friday. It's almost quarter block, block around, it's going into here, and it is loud, and it's a clear day, it was about 95 degrees in Grandhead when the town got overheated, but they loved it. We got ice cream for birds, and they got all over themselves. But, uh, Art Council is beneficiary, I appreciate it. And, uh, Happy Independence Day. Um, I don't, I have a trivia question here. Did anybody name one or two streets in town that are named after people that signed the Declaration of Independence?
Jefferson?
Jefferson, yes. Who was the other one? Ben Franklin?
Oh, Franklin.
Ah.
Washington.
Washington. For, no, Washington did not. For a bonus here, who was president when the Norton's arrived on the beautiful banks of the Sandusky River? Does anybody listen in high school history? Remember, you have Pop?
Bob Avrind with...
Bob Avrind, he made his... How about James Monroe? Yes, James Monroe. Okay. So that's a, well, from time to time, we're going to have bicentennial history dropping down, so you don't want to be embarrassed. Start studying a little bit, so... All right, thanks, thanks, Madam President.
Todd's reading about former presidents right now, so he'll need to know all that information. Um, does anyone have any questions for the mayor? None this evening? Okay, moving on then to the Service Safety Director's report.
Yes, Jeff's got a, another short report. Um, well, it's, uh, construction season, orange barrel season in Ohio, and it might as well be orange barrel season in Busires because on our pre-con for State Route North, which is a bad year to prepare, is, uh, next week. State Route South began July 1st on Marion Road. Um, there'll be some intermittent, like intermittent lane closure. Gary's going to have it on the website and on, um, access channel, uh, from Crowder Road to South Sandusky. Catch bases, they're doing some work right now, and as you probably seen on there. That work is expected to be completed, honest. And they're going to try to keep, you know, it's a busy time, obviously, for cars coming through. It's going to be some disruptions, and have patience with everybody. The East Mansfield-Weststone Street project, that, that will begin a week after the robbers discussed for. The contractor's going to shut down traffic on Whitestone Street from all of Mansfield during the day. They'll have one night open and the night will then be gone. So, we haven't had a final, we're trying to be sure we have all of them. So we'll let it, maybe, we'll just, we'll do some Facebook reports on that. Whitestone Plaza will be, you know, the... Boarding Control, we had a Boarding Control meeting, and we, uh, we worked bits for Marion Beal traffic light. As you remember now, we approved, we approved the purchase of, uh, the traffic lights that are going to match the rest of the town, have those arms on, we're going to be doing those. Uh, that went to, uh, Param Electric out of Wadsworth. And then Arrowhead repavement, the concrete work went to Delinger, a very fine contractor there out of Monroeville. You may have noticed that we have a bumper crop of mosquitoes, and, uh, we're trying to make a dent in them. We began spraying last... And we're trying to make a dent in them. We began spraying last week. And maybe do it again tomorrow, we'll see how they, how they come out. We're making some progress with the pool, slow. The rebar was installed, they worked Saturday, Friday late, Saturday and the part day Sunday. And we was waiting for inspectors. That's a lot of times what delays is waiting for the inspector. Everything that's inspected, we want it to be safe. And so, waiting for some county coming inspected. Once the inspection's complete, the concrete will be poured in. We also sent a certified letter to Northwest Pools letting them know that, you know, it's past that line. I'll be in this route if you'd like to. And keep in mind that city offices will be closed Thursday and Friday in bulk. If you, if your garbage pickup is normally Thursday, please get your garbage out tomorrow. If it's Friday, hold it till Monday, both days, please have it out by 7:00 a.m. Because our guys are gonna be working double routes. And thanks to Kwan's. And Doug over here, the councilman, and they're raising all that money for a beautiful fireworks show. And so, and it's gonna be at dusk on Wednesday. And with the rain date's gonna be Sunday, right there?
Yep. Rain date, uh, no, rain date's, well, it's the 7th. So, I believe 7th is a Saturday.
Saturday, okay. Fourth, fifth, no, it's Saturday, Sunday is a Saturday.
Sunday is a Saturday.
They both look like rain right now.
Last year it rained up until about 15 minutes. Ultimately, just so everybody knows, unless there's thunder and lightning or torrential downpour, they will still shoot fireworks off. They don't, just because the light was or a small rain, they won't stop shooting the show, they'll still continue on. There will be Mark's homemade ice cream out there. The kettle corn guy will be there and the kettle corn guy, Charlie's Kettle Corn, also has a hot dog cart. So, there will be food there as well this year, so.
If you can stay up for just a couple minutes, we'll do a little Facebook thing about it, have it on the city Facebook page. Thanks again to Kwan's. That's it, make this your report for tonight.
Okay, questions or comments for the mayor this evening, or I mean regarding the Service Safety Directors' report? None? Okay, moving on. Alaric, Mr. Allen, glad to see you here this evening, you weren't expecting me.
Thank you, well, I got home early tonight. We're gonna play some Red and Be. Not a report tonight, Friday, firstfriday.com and also movie night, Christmas in July, the movies. Sponsored by Ford Family Farms.
What's the hint?
Uh, the hint is, which street is that, Oakwood? Yeah, we're on Oakwood, Oakwood, yeah. The hint is, it is a homage, if you will, to the Oakwood Street lighting contest or battle.
Okay.
Fill you in there, yeah.
Okay, so that's this Friday night.
That's how we have it, it's a young boy.
Friday night, the doc says bring your chairs, bring your blankets, bring your family and there's, is there gonna be food there?
Uh, it's first Friday, so a lot of food vendors and stuff stay after. And so, there'll be that, Mark's Ice Cream is always there, Guardian Angels are always there, Popcorn do a great job. That's free, Church Street gives out water, so it's a lot of fun stuff.
We had a huge crowd the last night.
Yeah, we had 240, 240 people last night. It's good to see that one pop from cart getting used to.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Alaric this evening? None? Okay, moving on. This is Shifer, the auditor.
Oh, we have lots of things tonight. You've got the state in the cash position for the end of June. You've got the income tax monthly comparisons, you'll be happy to see that we made up some ground in June. We have our revenue tallies for budget. And you have the very popular comprehensive annual financial report tonight. So, if you have insomnia, just take this home and start reading it, you'll go right to sleep.
What is odd about this is this is what's back there on our BT building back behind us, representing all three of the school districts here. Yeah, and it's got the art parks in there, so there's a lot of statistics in here. So, go home and read your hearts content.
There you go. I also, I just couldn't say goodbye without having a couple referrals. We need an appropriation in the general fund, leisure tie, materials and supplies, an amount of $1,500 for park concessions. As hot as it suddenly become and the pool isn't open, so we're not selling drinks at the pool right now. The pot machines are getting a lot of use, so we need to add some money to that line. We also need an appropriation in Fund 406, that's our ODNR theater demolition, length of buildings, capital outlay in an amount of $37,500. This is for the Art Park stage. And this money will be requested from grant funds.
Okay, any questions for the auditor this evening? I need a motion then to refer to Finance Committee, the appropriation, $1,500 for the park and $37,500 for the Art Park stage, which will be coming from grant funds. Right of motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Foad, seconded by Scott, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed, thank you very much. Before you, you have the Treasurers' report dated May of 2019. It's provided to you at the last meeting, we need a motion to accept and file that.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. Foad, seconded by Mr. McKeever, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed, thank you. We don't have anything from the Police Chief or the Fire Chief. I need a motion to accept City Officers' report.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. Foad, seconded by Mr. Schach, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed, thank you. This is where we ask visitors input regarding reports and standing and our special committees and of city officers. No questions this evening, moving right along. As we go in here to do our legislation, remember that 31-2019, which is the, has been pulled for further consideration. So, we will not be doing that one this evening. So, for consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
We have three pieces of representation, two ordinances and one resolution. Ordinance number 30-2019, amending and supplementing ordinance number 61-2018, being annual appropriations ordinance for 2019. By appropriating from unappropriated general funds, a sum of $1,297.25 to the materials and supplies line item and $500 to the capital outlay line item, both being within the Police Department category within Program 1 Security versus property subparagraph. And finally appropriating from building liability funds, a sum of $30,520 to the other uses line item within the Fire Department category, within the building liability subparagraph, and declaring emergency, that's referred back to finance. Ordinance number 32-2019, amending ordinance 27-28 and the traffic control map and file established by Sections 305.01, 305.02, and 305.03 of the codified ordinances of the city of U.Sires, Ohio, to provide henceforth for no parking on either side of Sandusky Avenue from Charles Street to Perry Street from 5:30 a.m. to 7:30 a.m. on Fridays. That's referred back to Health and Safety Committee. Resolution number 226-2019, a resolution declaring the necessity and intention of the city of U.Sires to temporarily appropriate through imminent or delayed curtail procedures as set forth in Ohio revised in Section 163.06p, a temporary easement in certain described real property, 1426 Hoppe Avenue for waterline replacement and declaring emergency, that's referred to the Service Committee.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion to accept this as the first reading.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. Foad, seconded by Mr. Myers, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Ordinance number 30-2019 is referred back to Finance. Ordinance 32-2019 is referred to Health and Safety. And Resolution 226-2019 is referred to Service Committee. This is where we have, any member of the general public represent their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the first time. Is anyone here to address council this evening? Number one, do we need a recess? Committee reports on pending legislation, Finance Committee?
Finance is favorable to ordinance 30-2019, the various appropriations.
Thank you. Health and Safety?
Health and Safety is favorable to ordinance 32-2019, the traffic control map amendment.
And Service Committee?
Service is favorable to Resolution 226-2019, so waterline easement.
And temporary. I need a motion to accept these reports.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, seconded by Mr. Myers, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed, thank you. For further consideration of pending legislation, for the second and third readings of proposed ordinance number 30-2019, which are the various appropriations, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved, second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Foad?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance number 30-2019. Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 30-2019?
So moved, second.
Foad?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sa?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
Ordinance number 30-2019, the various appropriations is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of ordinance number, of proposed ordinance number 32-2019, which is the traffic control map amendments, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and waive the reading of the caption and text?
So moved, second.
Myers?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
No.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sa?
Yes.
Foad?
Yes.
Ordinance number 32-2019. Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 32-2019?
So moved, second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
No.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sa?
Yes.
Foad?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
Ordinance number 32-2019, the traffic control map amendment is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed Resolution 226-2019, which is the temporary easement, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved, second.
Foad?
Yes.
Sa?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Resolution number 226-2019. Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 226-2019?
So moved, second.
Foad?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sa?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Resolution 226-2019, the temporary easement is duly adopted. Thank you very much. Moving on, unfinished business, does anyone have any, anyone want to bring up this evening about unfinished business? No one? Moving on, new and miscellaneous business. There is no joint regular committee meeting on this Thursday, July the 4th. The joint special committee meeting will be held on Monday, July the 8th at 6:00 p.m. Since this is a special meeting held outside of our normal meeting time, only the items that are publicized ahead of time will be able to be discussed at that meeting, okay? Wednesday, July the 3rd, the U.Sires fireworks show presented by the U.Sires Polanas Club is out at the Crawford County Fairgrounds at 9:30 p.m. Rain date is July the 7th. Thursday and Friday, Independence Day city offices are closed and the mayor's already warned you about when to have your trash out. Friday, July the 5th, this first Friday, Christmas in July in downtown from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., followed by Shine's Art Park movie. Wednesday, July the 10th, the Traffic Commission will meet at 2:30 in Council Chambers. And July the 14th through the 20th is the 161st Crawford County Fair. That can't be 161, is it? Is it? Okay, at the county fairgrounds, so, well, the fairgrounds, the fairgrounds is gonna be busy.
It's a happen.
It is, okay. The, anyone else have anything they want to add to that? Okay, we're all here this evening. Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Auditor, yes, I knew you had something.
One piece of unfinished business.
Okay.
Okay. I need to know if council wants to have a post-audited conference about the audit. We don't have any findings or citations or, you know, anything of that nature. The only comments that we got was about some things that we need to, some procedures that we already do that we need to put in writing and have council approve. And we'll get on that and get that done, so.
So now, this book is available online on the.
It will be.
It will be on the state auditor's website, correct?
Yes, once the state does their review, they do a desk review of the audit and then it will, once that's completed, it'll be online.
And you'll let us know when that's, okay. So then the question to you is, do you want to schedule an individual review of this with, I think we did it last year?
Yes, we did do it last year.
Yeah.
Uh, no.
Do you want to do, have someone come up and it takes about two hours?
Do you feel any that we should do that?
No, but it, you know, if you've got specific questions, not anything, but otherwise, it's very routine. But I don't, I don't want to say, no, 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 I want it to be up to you guys. I'm not gonna say, because it's all, you know, it's all above board and over.
Could you possibly just give us the list of the procedures that they requested?
I think with that, those in those letters that you gave us?
I think I'm missing something that she didn't send me, but I will make sure that everybody gets it, that'll have those things listed.
And if you do have questions, you can always go to the auditor about it, okay?
That would be good for the procedure.
Then we need a motion then that we're going to forego a formal meeting.
So moved, second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, we can fill that in, okay. The joint regular committee meeting, which is going to be held on Monday, the, what is the date? Eight, at 6:00 p.m. All referrals from this council meeting and any open project list items cannot, the open project list items cannot be discussed. It's only the referrals and everything that is going to be publicized will be discussed during the committee meeting. Those items are.
We have essentially four new referrals. We have the three traffic control map changes from the Traffic Commission to Health and Safety, kind of does is one. We have the two referrals from the Traffic Commission to Plating. We have the two appropriations from the Auditor of Finance. And already in committee, and in Plating is the proposed amendment to codified ordinance 1131.12, which is the fire hydrants. And that is all I have on the agenda. I will put out the notes about 11:00 a.m. tomorrow, so if you want something else on the agenda, let me know.
Well, the city hall lobby views that all that.
I can put it on.
We can put it on here? Okay, I think, I think they have something to bring to us to discuss here, yeah. And that goes into some of the plans, okay.
You need an hour.
I need a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, seconded by Mr. Foad to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. We are adjourned at 7:48 p.m.